Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the December meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. All right, we will turn that up. Meanwhile, I'll speak right into it. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our October 26 meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Yes. Are there any suggested changes to the proposed minutes of our October meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the proposed minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Pamela Frederick, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. As many of you may be aware, I did not run for the RTM this fall. So I'd like to thank the moderator for his support and direction in the years that I've been in the RTM, including accepting my role as Chair of his Special Committee on Retirement and on accepting our findings. To the moderator pro tempore, Joan Caldwell, for her support and valued advice over the years. Also to the various committee chairs, including my first Finance Chair, Josh Brown, whose leadership of the Finance Committee set a high standard to follow and to build upon. To our first selectman, Peter Tessie, who it has been a pleasure to work as part of his efforts to better the town and who warmly welcomed me when I joined the RTM. To the BET members and to particularly Michael Mason and Steve Walkel, who were Budget Chairs during my tenure as Finance Committee Chair and who were very responsive in contributing to our meetings, in addition to the Town Department Leadership Team, and particularly to Pete Minarsky, who has been an excellent resource for the Finance Committee. I would like to make a special thank you to Dick Bergstreser for nominating me initially to the zoning board, although I wasn't selected, and then to Colleen Jenkins and to Lloyd Hall for providing me counsel and encouragement for joining this esteemed body. I can go on, of course, about countless other members who were so very welcoming to my participation and supportive of my efforts as a committee chair. But I must extend a grand thank you to my fellow Finance Committee members, to my District Chair, Dean Goss, and all my district current and past members, but especially to Mary McNamee, without whom I may not have been able to run for my first term. Many have sought to reform the RTM, but I think it best for the RTM to evolve on its own terms, to finding ways to continually improve. This is a body that works. Yes, we will always have room for improvement, but it serves its ultimate purpose, to provide a voice for a wide range of the citizenry through committee and through debate, and to provide oversight to the town on legislation, budgeting, and spending issues. I'd like to thank you all, and until we meet again, as I hope this is merely a sabbatical and not a retirement. Thank you in warmest regards.[262.27][262.27](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. I said at our district meeting and this morning on the radio that our body depends on hundreds of volunteers, 230 in fact, every two years, and a commitment over that two-year term. And this being the last meeting of our 2008-2009 term, I want to extend a thanks to those who, all of those who are not returning, who decided not to run for reelection. The town owes you a debt of thanks. You keep this body going by your support. We will welcome new members next month, but for now, I want to thank all of those who are not returning. And Pam Frederick was one of our committee chairs stepping down. We have two other committee chairs who I'd like to mention by name. David Melick, who is Chair of our Public Works Committee. And Jerry Isaacson, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee. Thank you one and all. Chris Von Kaiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee. No, he did run for reelection, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Moderator, sad to say I am returning. What else will we do with Monday nights? As Appointments Committee, I'm the present Chairman of the Appointments Committee, which, of course, reorganizes in January, as all our committees do, but I wanted to give everybody a heads up. The Appointments Committee has a particularly unusual task in that it does make nominations for appointments by the RTM in certain cases. Most of them, as you know, are made by the Board of Selectmen. But in the case of our two special committees, Labor Contracts and Claims Committees, we nominate from where they're own. So if there's anybody here tonight or is thinking about those committees, of course the incumbents, we welcome back, but if there's anybody else who's interested, we invite you to contact me, I'm in the book, and we'll get your papers in there so we have as many candidates as possible because it's the best opportunity for the RTM. We also, as you know, do the Condemnation Commission, which you have heard about of late, for the sewers and things of that nature, but that will probably be later on in the system. We generally try to have and prepare, we're going to have a slew of appointments that come out of the Board of Selectmen in the beginning of the term between now and the March meeting. All terms are up on March 31st. We'd like to have them, like we did last year, out of the way by March. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. Because we only have four agenda items, we will consider each of them separately. Is there a proposed sense of the meeting resolution that will be offered tonight that is not on our agenda, coming from a district or committee? There is not? Okay. Fine. Then we only have these four agenda items. And we will take them in numerical order. So item number one on the call now comes before us. May we have that resolution? Is Michael Chambers here? Michael Chambers, Director of Inland Wetlands and Water Course, is one word. You can just offer us the resolution, then we'll take up reports on it.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for having me. The ordinance, as it reads, is, it really essentially is no change to the ordinance that was passed two years ago. The only thing the agency is requesting of this forum tonight is to remove the sunset clause, which would effectively end this ordinance, December 31, 2009. For those of you who are not familiar with the ordinance, what it does is it gives this agency, the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency, the opportunity, or the ability, rather, to issue fines, largely to contractors, because that's what we as an agency are trying to focus on, to contractors who have conducted activities in blatant violation of the agency's regulations and have continued the violation and worked through the stop work order, which has been issued by staff.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Let's just get the resolution in front of us. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item one has been moved and seconded. May we hear the reports of the committees that consider this, beginning with Doug Wells, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, our committee took this item up last Monday night. Speaking for the proponent was Bob Klossey of Inland Wetlands, and we had Gene McLaughlin from the Law Department, who was also in attendance to answer questions. Mr. Klossey believes that the threat of a fine after notice to violators has been a strong incentive to ensure that there are work stoppages when the town discovers violations. Of the 43 notices delivered or sent out, all but one contractor immediately stopped work in accordance with the notice. That one contractor was fined $1,000 and did not appeal. A minority of our committee members felt that there should be the imposition of another sunset clause so that we could take a look at this again in the end of 2013. A motion was made and seconded that a sunset clause be inserted with that date, December 31, 2013. Our vote on the motion to amend by inserting a sunset clause was three in favor, nine opposed, so that motion failed. We then addressed a motion made by District Five Member Mary Ferry to insert language to provide a 30-day window in which a violator could pay the fine after assessment of the fine by a hearing officer. That motion to provide this window of opportunity for payment of the fine was also voted down, three in favor, nine opposed, so that motion also failed. We then took two votes on the item, one as to legal order. The vote there was 11 in favor with none opposed. District One abstaining. We took a vote on the merits. The vote there was 11 in favor, one opposed, with District One voting against the ordinance.
Thank you. Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of Town Meeting. This item was presented to the Land Use Committee at its meeting last Monday evening by Michael Chambers, Director of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency. As you've heard, it is an ordinance that establishes a system of fines that can be levied against the contractor performing the work in addition to the homeowner. The fines are levied by the agency, but the ordinance contains an appeal procedure pursuant to which a party who has been fined can get a hearing before an independent hearing officer. The ordinance was enacted two years ago in the form that you have before, the form that we have before us this evening, except for the sunset clause. That's the only difference. If we do not act affirmatively on the reenactment this evening, the ordinance will cease to be effective at the end of this month. In the two years, as you've heard, in the two years that it's been in effect, there have been over 40 wetlands violations considered by the agency, but it has levied only one fine under the ordinance. That fine was not appealed, and no hearings have been held under the ordinance. Mr. Chambers was of the view that the ordinance is having its intended effect of ensuring greater compliance with the inland wetlands regulations. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Dean Goss, Chair of District One.
Our district feels strongly that the sunset provision should be continued in this, and to that effect, we would like to move to amend what is before us by reinstituting the sunset clause with reading as it does now, with the sole exception being the date, rather than September 31, 2009, it would become December 31, 2013.
All right. That being a motion to amend offered on behalf of one of our districts, it does not require a second. So that would be a four-year sunset provision, allow this to operate for four years if we were to approve it. Discussion on the District One motion to amend. Mr. Diddakis, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the Town Meeting. When this ordinance first came before the Legislative and Rules Committee, I guess about two years ago, I was one of the strong proponents to put the sunset provision in it the first time. And I did so because over the years I've served on the RTM, and over the years I've been involved in politics, one of the biggest issues and the greatest concerns I've seen from our constituents has been the activity of the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Board. And there's been a lot of frustration that's emanated out of that. And I just feel that as you read this ordinance, there's a lot of power that is given to the so-called director, and I just think it makes good common sense that we let this ordinance run again, only one time was it really used in the past two years, and then take another look at it, four years hence, and see if it has continued to work well. There's no cost to this. It's a freebie. It takes maybe 20 minutes of administrative time to put it on the call and bring it back to us. So, you know, I just think maybe the better part of valor is to keep the sunset provision in and take another look at it in four years. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. Our RTM is one of the purest forms of democracy operating in this country. In democratic institutions, watching laws and how laws work out, I think, is very important. Transferring power that you cannot review is not the wisest thing. A lot of power transfers to the director via this ordinance that we have. It looks like it's beginning to work out, but we only have one test case. For our constituents, I think it's incumbent upon us to put a sunset clause in this so that the RTM, representative of the people, can examine this four years down the line. It is just service to the people of Greenwich to keep our eyes on how this works out, and I ask you to please vote for the sunset clause. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Will the district chairs, we're going to have to take a record vote on this. Please mark your vote, pardon me? Randall Huffman, District Seven.
Good evening. When this came before the committee, I supported the similar amendment that was proposed there because I believe, as has been stated, that this did represent a departure. It was looked at as one approach that we might take to strengthen enforcement, but also to see what can be done with a proper oversight and review of a very serious subject, a subject that we know across the town is creating considerable problems as wetlands have been affected, as drainage has not been sufficient to address the water and flows that we've had in town, particularly as a result of development. And I think that this is an important enough subject that we should come back and look at it again, and I think four years is an appropriate time for us to keep this in mind, to look at it, and then to consider it again as it approaches another sunset. So I would urge you as well to support a four-year sunset clause for this provision. Thank you.
Thank you. David Dutch, District Ten.
I have to confess, I'm a little baffled by all this. We already had one set-set provision. We've had a two-year look at this. It seems to me there hasn't been one test case, there's been over 40 test cases. We've not heard any report of any abuse of this fining system by the director or the agency. I really don't see the need for another looksee when it appears to have worked so far.
All right. That raises a question. My understanding was there's been only one fine levied in the two years. Is that correct, Mr. Chambers?
That is correct.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion to amend. All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District One, motion to amend item number one by adding a sunset provision. If you are in favor of the four-year sunset provision to be added, you should vote yes. If you are against that sunset provision, you should vote no. We will need to await the result of this vote, so I ask before proceeding, so I ask While we are waiting for that vote, I would like to remind those who may have heard this already and inform those who have not, we are going to provide, the town is providing to all RTM members, an email address that you can use for RTM business. We will inform the members of each, well, we'll inform the district chairs what the procedure will be for that, but in brief, we will have two districts at a time call the vendor who is organizing this and make arrangements for your email address. It will consist of your first name, dot, your last name, at GreenwichCT.org, and that would be for RTM town business only. And, you know, it would be your option as to whether you want to use that. I know we're getting a directory questionnaire going, and you'll have to see how you like it in terms of whether you want to switch over. One other procedural issue for tonight's meeting. Item number four is the sense of the meeting resolution offered by the BOC regarding the budget. Anticipating that there may be interested speakers, there are sign-up lists outside and at the front. We have the result on, we have the result of the vote on District One's motion to add a sunset provision to item number one. Those in favor, 86. Those opposed, 87. Abstaining one. That motion has failed.[1652.01][1652.01](APPLAUSE). All right. Further discussion on item one. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number one, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will continue with the business of the meeting. Item number two now comes before us. Alan Corey, Director of Parking Services, with that resolution. Mr. Diddakis?
We are in the process of doing that. Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, our resolve that the amount of $18,000 additional appropriation for lighting upgrade of the Plaza, the Greenwich Plaza Garage, be approved.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item two has been moved and seconded. Pamela Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, RTM members, guests, this item was presented to the Finance Committee by the Director of Parking, Alan Corey. He informed us that several automobiles had been stolen, and there's a number of auto vandalism in the garage. We were given notice that there are a number of safety concerns as the wall where the lighting will be installed is currently pretty much pitch black, it's darkened, and so it presented a significant safety concern. This is a relatively small investment to provide a deterrent and improve safety, given that lack of action on the part of the town could lead to other issues should future problems occur in that area. This highlights the difficulty of cutting costs where safety, in fact, is at issue. A balance of $24,537 remains from the Town Hall Garage Project. That will be returned to the town, and of that, $18,000 of this will be used to fund this item if approved this evening. So there would be
the point that this is an eighteen thousand dollar additional appropriation with no account number. Now, why is there no account number? Traditionally, we appropriate two accounts. I think it's perhaps because if you, as you've heard, a project came in under budget. We got money left over, let's figure out where we're going to spend it. We're going to deal with item four later, which is controlling town spending. It also suggests to me that perhaps that this project didn't go through the capital improvement process like every other capital project should in this town. And so I rise to say that I am not going to vote in favor of this unless the town can provide to me the fact that there is an appropriate account number that this money's going into. Otherwise, effectively, all we're doing is creating slush funds.
Further discussion on item two. Maria Pop, District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. I'd like to present a motion on behalf of District Four to postpone this and bring it back to us in January. We do not have a problem with a safety issue. We've all been in that garage. We find it very, very dark. I don't know how anyone could read a newspaper at night. I could hardly see to park my car. I can see that it's very dangerous, but since we know that this is a joint venture between the town of Greenwich and another entity, we don't know what our responsibilities are, what our liabilities are, and if we stand in and repair the lights, which we may not be liable for or the maintenance thereof, do we create any additional problems? Are we liable? Do we have more responsibility down the line? That's our, the reason for our motion to postpone and bring this back with more information. We thought the information in the explanation was very, very light. Thank you.
This is offered on behalf of the district? Ms. Pop? This is on behalf of the district? Thank you. Does not require a second. Discussion on the most, the motion to postpone item two to our January meeting. All right. I will call for a voice vote. If you are in favor of putting this off to January, you should vote in favor of this motion to postpone. If you want to continue considering it tonight, you should vote no. All those in favor of District Four's motion to postpone item two to the January meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Let's call for a rising vote. All those in favor of the motion to postpone, please rise. Thank you. Those opposed, please rise. The motion has failed. Mr. Buttel?
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District Four motion to postpone item two to the January meeting. We will need to await the result of that vote before proceeding further. Anyone who would like to get on the speaker list for item four, now would be a good time to do that. There's lists in front and lists outside the door.
We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, one sixty-two. Opposed, eight. Abstaining, zero. That item is carried. We have the result of the vote on item number one, which is the ordinance regarding inland wetland violations. Those in favor, ninety-one. Opposed, eighty-three. Abstaining, three. That motion has carried. Item three now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Proposed RTM resolution amending Greenwich Municipal Code, Article twelve dash six dot one, property tax relief for seniors. It is the same as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item three has been moved and seconded. Pamela Frederick, Chair of our finance committee.
Mr. Moderator, RTM members and guests. This item was presented to the finance committee by John Crary, the town administrator. The RTM approved previously changes that expanded the senior tax credit program last year. The item before us expands the program to allow for annual deferrals of up to three thousand in property tax for seniors with income of no more than sixty, the sixty thousand and who are at least sixty-five years of age. Whereby the town would be granted a security lien in the property pending repayment in full, and the town would earn annual interest at the ten percent treasury rate plus two percent. The deferral and interest can be repaid at any time, repaid in full at any time, but will require, will be required to be repaid within twenty-five, two-hundred seventy days of the death of the taxpayer or within thirty days of a transfer of the property. In keeping with the Connecticut general statutes, the taxpayer must have been a resident for one year, and the town ordinance will not apply to taxpayer deemed a resident of any other locale. Residents can be approved for either the tax credit or the tax deferral, but not for both, where the maximum tax credit is nineteen hundred dollars compared to three thousand maximum for a deferral. The programs are still relatively new for the town, and in order to contain their budget impact, the maximum budget allocation is set annually by the BET to more, no more than one-half of one percent of the tax levy, where the expectation is that the total budget amount in 2010 will be approximately one point one million. The town estimate of participation in the tax deferral portion of the program is twenty-five home, homeowners of a total of nine hundred fifty-four that are eligible. Another limitation is that the cumulative deferral on any property can be no more than fifty percent of its assessed value. It is limited further by the taxpayer's pro, prorated ownership percentage. In order for the deferral program to be in place for the upcoming tax year, these changes would need to be approved and in place by January 2010. The ordinance is, is set to expire June thirtieth, 2014. The vote by the finance committee was twelve zero zero in favor.
Thank you. Jerry Isaacson, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for your kind words. We had both John Crary and Sam Diebler at our, at our meeting to discuss this, and, and also Peter Berg attended as well. The only thing I would add to Pam's comments were that one of the deterrence, if you will, for this, for seniors to take advantage of this, is the fact that there would be a lien on their property. Further interest will be charged on the deferred portion of the taxes. Our committee felt that the sum, the, the lower limit of five hundred and seventy thousand was too low, and so we had one motion to increase that lower limit, had a motion to raise the lower limit to eight hundred thousand dollars. This was defeated by a vote of two eight zero. We then had a motion to raise this lower limit to a million dollars, which passed by a vote of eight two zero, and I will offer this amendment on behalf of the committee at the appropriate time. That, by the way, the two negative votes on that last one were from District Six, who felt that there were other alternatives for seniors such as reverse mortgages, and District Nine, who felt that we were tying the hands of the BET.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took this up last Monday evening. We had John Crary, Sam Diebler, and Gene McLaughlin from the Lot Department to highlight the program provisions and to answer questions. The explanatory comments in, provide excellent insight into the reasons for the program and the considerations made by the first selectments committee in fashioning the amendment to the existing ordinance. I will not repeat those comments here, except to point out that our committee was overwhelmingly the those comments here except to point out that our committee was overwhelmingly in favor of this program. There was very little controversy except on the issue of the need for there to be a notice to a debt, a tax deferral applicant who has a mortgage on his or her home. The applicant's entitlement to receive the benefits of the deferral program requires that the applicant agree that a tax lien can be placed on the land records, which lien would have a priority over any existing mortgage. A standard mortgage covenant is that the borrower cannot permit a lien that has priority, priority over a lender's lien to be placed on the property and would be a violation of that mortgage covenant, which would entitle the lender to claim default and to foreclose. While this may be unlikely, it is nevertheless a remedy that is available to any mortgage lender. A majority of the committee believe that in order to protect the town and the applicant, it was important that there be an affirmative obligation to disclose the information to the applicant. We therefore move to amend this resolution to add language at the end of Section Eight to provide a notice, and at the appropriate time, I would offer that motion. We also, there is also a notice that, we were notified by Mr. McLaughlin that there was one Scrivener's error that should be changed. I don't know if you want me to offer that now or later?
Now is fine.
Okay. On page ten of the, of the call, in the paragraph filing dates, which is number nine, four lines up from the bottom, there is a line that begins, "application on file to continue the tax credit accordingly." That should be relief because it refers not only to the tax credit program, but the tax deferral program. They made that change in the last line, but they just missed it in the fourth line. So that language should be changed, so that credit is deleted and the word relief inserted in its place.
All right. Is there any objection to that amendment? Hearing none and absent objection. That amendment is adopted upon unanimous consent. Mr. Isaacson?
On behalf of Health and Services Committee, we move that the language of no less than five hundred and seventy thousand dollars be changed to no less than one million dollars.
All right. Now, this is in Section Four.
Section Four, yes.
And it appears on page eight of the call.
Yes, sir.
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on the Health and Human Services Committee motion to amend Item Three. Peter Berg, District Eight.
Good evening. I'm speaking in favor of this amendment. This past January, the RTM voted to expand the senior tax credit program so that seniors earning more than thirty-nine thousand dollars, up to sixty thousand dollars, could participate. We did not change the floor budget or increase the ceiling for the program. Subject to our action, the First Selectment submitted his budget at the floor amount, and the BET set the final budget at an amount that only allowed seniors at the former income of thirty-nine thousand dollars to participate. By setting the budget, two-hundred-and-forty-six seniors who had applied with incomes between thirty-nine thousand and sixty thousand were told that they would get no credit. Now you're being asked to again expand this program, and this time to allow seniors to defer their taxes. The amount of taxes that can be deferred are larger than the credits, so for a given budget amount, even fewer seniors can participate. In August, the Greenwich Times reported that, quote, "The RTM initially committed five hundred and seventy thousand dollars toward the elderly tax relief program this year." That was only enough funding to give credits to seniors earning thirty-four thousand dollars or less, however. So, in effect, the RTM got blamed, if you will, for underfunding the program that we had expanded. So, to prevent that from happening again, I believe the RTM has to increase the floor, and therefore I support this motion to amend and increase the floor to one, one million dollars. Thank you.
Do people actually believe what they read in the Greenwich Times?
Neil Vigder, we love you. That was just a joke.
Actually, I did, I did submit a letter to the editor, which Greenwich Times published to clarify that, that matter. Greenwich Times subsequently published yet another story with the same statement in it, and I submitted a second letter, again correcting it, and Neil apologized for having it appear twice.
Okay. Further discussion on the Health and Human Services Committee motion to amend. Stephen Walco, Chair of the BET, to be followed by Chris Von Keiseling.
Good evening, fellow citizens, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I rise tonight as Chairman of the BET, although the BET passed the ordinance as it's proposed and not with this amendment. Obviously, we did not take up this amendment as a body. I will add, however, that any increase in this amount impacts the budget. And as I've stated to many of you, when we talk about either adding or subtracting from the budget, especially in areas where one wishes to add to the budget for whatever certain project or area they wish to add, I, you'll always hear me say, "Well, where's the money coming from, or what project are you taking it from?" So, if the RTM believes that this should, the floor should be a million dollars, you have a sense of the meeting resolution coming up before you that shows actually a decrease, realize that with, with respect to this particular program, you would then be saying, "Increase this by a certain percentage," certainly higher than the three-and-a-half percent that we've had for the budgets on other programs, and certainly much greater than either the no increase in, in the sense of the meeting resolution or the five percent decrease that you're talking about. So, I just ask for you to, to think about this in the context of the overall budget, not necessarily to whether or not this is a good program or one that should be funded at a, a higher level. Obviously, there are many worthy programs out there, and it's up to you to decide whether or not this program should be funded at that level, and if you do, realize that there are consequences within the budget that, that you'll force then the BET and the First Selectmen to, to enact, and then you'll get a chance to review once again. But if you, if you make this change, it just decreases the amount of latitude we have in terms of funding this program relative to the important items that we, other important items that we have in our budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah. I'm disturbed a little bit by our generosity. Certainly, I'm an elderly person. I would like to have relief. I don't even have a house to get relief, you know, from. But I think we have to be wise about this, and I think what the Chair of the BET has told us is something we need to take to heart. We have very limited resources, even the town of Greenwich, and, you know, when you do something in one area, it's a sum-zero budget. If you take from one, you have, or give to one, you have to take from another. I find it particularly difficult when, for example, we have things where we can use public facilities with leases that would bring money into the town's coffers, and the same, very same people who are wanting to raise the money for this and let seniors afford better housing, cell phones, et cetera, well, now does not want to lease town property to bring some kind of income in to offset that. So, you can't have it both ways, and this is the problem of government. You have to make these balance choices in policy and spending between what would be nice and what, what is fair and equitable. I wish you would think this over and stay with the original proposal.
Further discussion on the Health and Human Services motion to amend. Mr. D. Diddakis, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. You know, I, I, I thought Mr. Walco's comments were actually very well-founded, and in hearing them, I think what we need to remember is we look at this proposed amendment, is it setting a floor, not a ceiling, and therefore there is nothing that's preventing the BET to increase the funding of this, should there be surplus funds, to put more money into the overall program, but I think it makes a lot more sense to give them the authority to do that as opposed to mandate it today. I have an enormous faith and confidence in the BET, and so I'm going to vote this down, and I hope you do, too.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Health and Human Services, motion to amend Item Three, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will continue. Mr. Wells, you had a motion to amend on behalf of your committee.
Yes, sir. On page ten of the call, at the end of Section Eight, there is a bold cap sentence. At the end of that sentence, the language to be inserted, and this, by the way, our motion to amend was, voted nine in favor, three opposed. The language to be inserted is, "The tax assessor shall provide the applicant for a tax deferral. Written notice that if the applicant's property is mortgaged, entering into this agreement may violate the mortgage covenants, and the applicant should contact his or her mortgage lender."
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Do you have that, could you hand that language up, please?
Sure.
All right. I will read that once again. This is a motion to amend, to insert the following language at the end of Section Eight. "The tax assessor shall provide the applicant for a tax deferral. Written notice that if the applicant's property is mortgaged, entering into this agreement may violate the mortgage covenants, and the applicant should contact his or her mortgage lender." Discussion on the Legislative and Rules motion to amend. None? All right. We will await the vote that is currently pending, and then I will call for the vote, so that we do not confuse the issue. Let's get all those voting cards that are currently in process completed, and then I will call for the vote on the Legislative and Rules motion to amend.
Again, good evening. Tonight is the last meeting, not only for this term of the RTM, but this term of the BET, and with us tonight is a former RTM member, esteemed colleague of, of this body, and a retiring member of the BET, and so I would ask that you all join me in a round of applause for Bob Stone and all of his service to the town of Greenwich. Bob has been an integral part of our, of our BET for the last several years and has served as both Vice Chairman and on the Budget Committee, and it certainly has been a pleasure working with him, and I wish him all the best. Thank you.
We have the result of the vote on the Health and Human Services Committee motion to amend by raising the floor to one million dollars. Those in favor, twenty-nine; opposed, one forty-seven; abstaining, five. That motion has failed. Any further discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend by adding that notice provision? All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules, motion to amend Item Three. Again, Mr. Wells?
I move that we do a voice vote on this.
No, this is a matter of substance. We have to have a record vote on this. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules, motion to amend Item Three. This is to add the notice provision to applicants regarding liens perhaps violating their mortgage covenants. If you are in favor of requiring the tax assessor to give that notice, you vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. And once again, we will need to await the results of that vote before taking a final vote, but we could continue with discussion on Item Three in general. Michael Petricelli, District Twelve.
Hi, good evening. Mr. Moderator, a point of information, please. It's related to Item Seven in the call regarding delinquent taxes on this item.
You're talking about Section Seven of Item Number Three.
Section Seven of Item Number Three.
Right.
Delinquent taxes, no tax relief shall be given under this section to any person who has delinquent taxes to the town, from real property, personal property, or motor vehicles, including capital assessments, and it goes on.
Right.
My question is this. Is on October twenty-second, Judge Tierney of the Superior Court of Stanford made a ruling regarding the North Myannis Sewer Appeal. Page thirteen of that appeal, the court will enter an injunction permitting the appealing tax plaintiffs to pay seventy-five percent of each sewer assessment installment due, and on page fifteen, the town of Greenwich is restrained from taking any further steps to collect twenty-five percent of installments of the sewer improvement assessment for each of the named plaintiffs. My question is, for consideration to be current on assessments, is the town following procedure of seventy-five percent is full payment, as directed by Judge Tierney?
Looks like the only town attorney we have here is Mr. McLaughlin. Looks like the only town attorney we have here is Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. McLaughlin, do you care to respond to that? Gene McLaughlin, Assistant Town Attorney.
Mr. Moderator, members of the representative town meeting. The paragraph of the ordinance states that in order to take advantage of this program, applicants would have to be current on all taxes and assessments. So with the ordinance as worded, you would not qualify if you were not current on your assessments of any type, including sewer. So that is my opinion, and I believe that is consistent with the ruling of Judge Tierney. This is not an action that is taken by the town to collect taxes. This is a condition for applicants to take advantage of a program. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item number three. Dr. Carlson, District 1.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I would like to amend this proposal with regard to the interest rate. And I would like to direct the members of the RTM to look on page 12. And in page 12, this is a continuation of section 11. I wish to amend section 11, Part B, which is entitled Tax Deferral, subsection 2, single I. I would amend that, and this comes in the second full paragraph, I would amend that to read, "The tax deferred shall be subject to an interest rate of 4%." And then I would amend further by deleting section double I, and section triple I becomes double I, and section IV becomes section three, subsection three. In other words, what I'm saying is, a flat rate of 4% is the interest rate that one of these elderly people in trouble would pay over the four-year period, that this would be legal before it comes back to us, because there's a sunset clause.
Is there a second? All right. It has been moved and seconded to amend item three.
Might I speak on this?
Let me repeat it, and we'll get it before you, and I will open it up for discussion. The motion to amend is to delete the current language of section, I believe this is 11B 2, small, lowercase, Roman numeral I, which currently reads the text, "Deferred shall be subject to an interest charge equal to the nominal rate for the United States Treasury Security 10-Year Constant Maturity quoted on an investment basis in the Federal Reserve Statistical Release as of each July 1, or the first business day thereafter, plus 200 basis points, 2%." And replace that language with, "The tax deferred shall be subject to an interest rate of 4%." Is that correct, Dr. Carlson? And then delete what is currently lowercase, Roman numeral 2 entirely, and then renumber three and four, so that it would be two and three. That has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. Discussion on that motion to amend. Dr. Carlson.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I believe that this proposal before us is ostensibly here to help elderly people who are in severe financial problems. I don't think having them pay an interest rate of 5% is a good idea. I think you're going to have some inflation a little bit later on, and you might actually put an additional cross on some of these people's backs to carry, an interest rate cross. So I think, since this is a sunset for four years after four years, that you can just let them have it for four years at 4% and see how it works out. I think you can get a variable rate mortgage now at 3%. So you're wondering about, oh, could this proposal possibly help to give them deferred taxation at 5 and 1/4% or thereabouts? Thank you.
Bob Tuthill, District 4.
Mr. Moderator, I was one of the two RTM members who was appointed by the first electman to this committee, the other was Gordon Ennis. And I think I'd like to kind of make a couple of comments. First of all, the committee knew that this had to be adapted, adopted by January. We knew that something like this could very likely go through a procedure where, you know, there are some amendments to be made. But the key here is, if it's going to be effective for the 10-11 tax year next July, it has to be approved by the RTM according to the assessor and the controller. It would have to be approved in January. So we have a month to play with this deliberately. Now I'd like to talk about the specific proposal here. The proposal that was made was the 10-year treasury rate, okay? Which I think was 3.46 or something. I look at the town administrator, and he kind of agrees with me. Plus 2%. So that would be the latest one we saw. If interest rates go up, it would be more. Now, why do we say 2% beyond the 10-year treasury rate? Because the thinking there was that we're going to have to probably develop some computer software to keep track of this. We really don't know how many people we're going to have in this program. Westport, which is quite generous, has 200 people. They have less than half of the, you know, population that we have. But they've been doing it since the 80s. So with time, we think you'll get more people coming in. We wanted to try to be able, and by the way, the cost of this program has to be paid for out of the current tax bills, even though the money will all be recouped at the end. However, if you were to adopt what was proposed here, 4%, you're probably going to be losing some money on this. The proposal here would say, take the 10-year rate at plus 2%. Our hope would be, come four years from now, when we come back again and ask for something new, that it might be a, you know, a lower rate. Maybe it would be the treasury plus 1%. But we're trying, again, to feel our way with probably rather small numbers of people applying at the beginning. If you adopt this, the change that's proposed to the 4%, you have no way to be able to correct this if it turns out that inflation starts to go up, which is highly likely. And we'll be losing money on this. And one of the things that this committee said is, we will not lose a dime under what the proposal is. So please, turn this down. It would work against everything that this committee was trying to do. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Carlson motion to amend. Item three. Mark Pruner, District 10.
I rise in opposition to this motion, not because it's not a logical motion, but because we have 230 people here, and we've had too many amendments tonight. My, if a person can't get either their committee or their district to approve a motion, why wait until tonight? Is there anything about this motion that's so crucial that it couldn't have waited? 1% of $1,000 is 10 bucks. Couple hundred people have been sitting here debating a few hundred dollars at most on this. So I recommend that we vote against it, and in the future, whenever possible, we vote against any amendment that's brought ab initio without being reviewed by a committee or has some other reason, that we have to have it reviewed on an emergency basis without full review by the committees. Thank you.
Michael Petroselli.
Hi, I'd just like to follow up on something Mr. Tuthill said. I'm sorry I missed part of it, and if I misunderstood, I apologize. I heard you talking about inflation and the 10-year constant maturity. As I read this, it will reset annually each July 1st. So if there is inflation, and then the treasury yield curve moves in a parallel fashion, we're resetting each year. So I'm not commenting on the rest of his speech, but regards to the penalty rate, it will reset each year.
Okay. Further discussion on the Carlson motion to amend. All right. We're going to have to take a record vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Carlson motion to amend item three, and proceed to poll your delegation. I do have the results of the Legislative and Rules motion to amend by adding that provision from the, that the tax assessor gave notice. Those in favor, 168; opposed, 12; abstaining, 0. That motion to amend is carried. All right. While we are voting on the Carlson amendment, we can continue general discussion on item number three. Is there anyone who would like to address the body on item number three? Ah, Todd Ladonia. Who is our new tax collector. Oh, you take office in January, is that right? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members. Todd Ladonia, District 8. Last time I'll say that in after 16 years. And I'm sure a lot of you are happy you won't have to hear it anymore. But keeping in line with my hallmark of speeches, I'll keep it short. I'm fully in favor of doing whatever we can do to help our seniors stay in their homes. We are creating a mountain of work for the tax collector's office, but the tax collector will have to live with that. So please, vote yes on this resolution. Thank you all for all your work over the years, and it's been a great ride.
Further discussion on item number three. All right. We will await the result of the vote on the Dr. Carlson amendment before taking a final vote on the item. If you would like to get up and stretch your legs, now would be a good time to do that. Ms. Caldwell? There are no other sign-up sheets outside, correct? Thank you. All right. We have the result of the vote on the Carlson motion to amend. Those in favor, 22; opposed, 163; abstaining, 0. That item has failed. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number three, senior tax relief, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting on item three, we will continue with our final agenda item. Item number four now comes before us. That resolution will be offered by the chairman of our Budget Overview Committee, Michael Petroselli of District 12.
Thank you. Call item four to consider and act upon the following sense of the meeting resolution requested by the Budget Overview Committee as it appears in the call.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second, and is currently before us. May we have the committee reports on item number four? Bob Brady, Chair of our Education Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members, guests. Merry Christmas. The Education Committee met on December 7th. All districts except one in four were represented. Committee was assisted by Barbara Nucci of the Budget Overview Committee, Board of Education Chairman Stephen Anderson, Superintendent Dr. Freund, BET Chairman Walco, and PTA Council President Susan Rogers. The BOC sense to the meeting resolution recommends fiscal 2011 operating budget 5% below fiscal 2010s, which is a $15 million decrease. A flat $126 million education budget with no or limited service reductions, using the savings to reduce the tax levy and to increase the capital and nonrecurring fund balance, and not borrowing so much money. Ms. Nucci explained that the SOMAR's purpose is to initiate a budget discussion. The BOC does not have the specific recommendations as to which items should be reduced or eliminated from the budget. BOC believes that the current budget is unsustainable without substantial tax and borrowing increases. The approximately $15 million budget reduction would be about a 15% reduction in the non-school operating budget, exclusive of fixed charges, and if applied, only to the 100 codes, about a 20% reduction in those. Mr. Anderson said that the level services school budget is about $131.6 million. Mr. Anderson said that the level services school budget is about $131.6 million. A flat budget would result in substantial reductions in service. For example, it would be the equivalent of about 78 certified positions, an increase in the student-teacher ratio to 11.1 from the present 10.2. Mr. Walco advised us that the guideline budget is prudent, retains essential services, and modest tax increases. The guideline budget is 5.8% greater than fiscal 2010s. He expressed his concern the SOMAR provides no guidance as to what services the RTM wants removed from the budget to obtain the savings. Finally, he noted that the BOC recognizes labor costs are the town's principal budget driver, which are within the control of the RTM, which is the Labor Contract's approving authority. The SOMAR provides no guidance as to what limits should be placed on labor contracts. While generally, sense of the meeting resolutions are unenforceable, this one is fully enforceable by the RTM. We can simply reduce the budget lines in May to reach these numbers if this is what we want. The Education Committee's vote was 0 in favor, 8 opposed, with 2 abstentions, and districts 1 and 4 unrepresented. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker? Karen Satacon, Chair of the Public Works Committee. I'm sorry, Parks and Rec Committee.
Not yet. I hope not. Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Petroselli had a joint session which our committee attended. He then came to our committee meeting itself and reviewed. I'm not going to go over the points. You're going to hear it many times. The main issue in our committee was whether we wanted to take a vote on this. So we voted on that issue, whether to vote on it, and it was defeated 4-8-0 on the basis that it was really not a committee vote at this point, but more of an individuals, which would take place this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Isaacson with the Health and Human Services Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Too, will not repeat some of the points that have already been made. The committee's major concern was that while there was agreement that the objective was valuable, some of the language was too prescriptive and would not be realistic as the budget was developed. A revised resolution was proposed and voted on, and I can give that at the appropriate time. The vote to revise was 7-3-0. Districts 1 and 4 absent. The no votes were from District 8, 11, and 12, who felt that the discussion was valuable, but that the RTM should not vote on this resolution. We then voted on the amended resolution, and the vote, believe it or not, was 5-5-0, with the no votes expressing the same reservations as before. I will offer this amendment at the appropriate time, but it is to change the language, so it is not so prescriptive.
Thank you. Pam Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Given the other reports, my comments will be brief. The item was presented to the Finance Committee by Bill Drake of the Budget Overview Committee. He indicated that the sense of the meeting resolution was to provide a general sense of direction to the BET and the first selectmen. He noted that it was not the role of the BOC to make or recommend specific cuts, but rather to leave prioritization of cuts to the town administration and BET. The committee, while supportive of the town further tightening its belt and the general intent of the Budget Overview Committee, could not support the item because it was too broad and lacks specifics on implementation. Its greatest benefit, however, may be the discussion that it'll engender tonight, allowing the RTM to begin to focus very early in the process on the budget stresses that the town faces. What it does not do, however, is to provide clear solutions. The vote of the Finance Committee was 0, 12 against the item.
Thank you. Dr. Delman with the Town Services report.
Good evening. First, I forgot to say before, the Town Services wishes to welcome one of our former members, who now has a front row seat. We met with Mr. Mason on item number 4. How would item 4's 5% affect services and how much are we willing to give up? It's unlikely that the education, police, or fire budgets would be decreased, so that would require the remaining sections of the budget, which are quality-of-life issues, to be decreased in excess of the 5%. Outsourcing select jobs was mentioned, and some towns upstate outsource much of what we choose to do in-house. It was agreed that we need to save money, but how do we do it? Our vote was 4 in favor, 3 opposed, 4 abstentions, District 8 absent.
Thank you. David Melick with the report of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you. We took up these items last -- this item last Monday night. We had an interesting discussion. 10 districts were present. District 2 and 3 were absent. We actually voted 5 in favor, 3 against, 2 abstaining. Districts 9, 11, and 12 voted no. Abstentions were districts 1 and 6. The group focused on the roles and the budget process, and how the RTM is in effect precluded from setting a tone at this role as primarily due to other functions, the BET, because we're in the budget season right now. We talked about this because one of the big issues is the capital improvement process, and how with that process, that defines projects that would be spent. But historically, the town has neglected capital to constrain budget expenditures. So, in effect, let me get to the point here. It's kind of hard to get exactly. Our desires to control costs then are limited by the budget development process and our specific budget approval processes that prohibits the effective bulk reductions that match our concerns for reducing costs. In other words, come May, per the education report, we don't have the guts to do anything. However, however, doing that blindly is problematic because it touches on the points just made by Town Services that, what are the impacts? And that's the issue. So that, I believe, is one of the reasons why the committee felt we wanted to send a message that we are supportive of aggressive cuts, but they'd be done properly and throughout the budget process, not at the end of the budget process, but as early as possible. So the resolution then had merit from the perspective of the committee that it's earlier, as early a time as possible, to send a positive message that we are getting tired of the additional expenditures. That does, however, leave the specific cuts to be done as part of the normal budget process or the cuts that are felt to be reasonable and can be absorbed. Again, it's 5 in favor, 3 against, 2 abstentions. 9, 11, 12 against, 1 and 6 are abstaining. The votes, the abstentions and the noes were four points that were made in effect by the other reports. Some were against the apparent authority of the motion, i.e. against the BET's prerogative. Some were thinking that one district was very clear that they felt that the actually, in the favor, felt that the amount should be more than 5%, and that the deduction should be more aggressive. Then the abstentions in districts 1 and 6 were such that they were not comfortable with it. I think that alluded to some of the language, the language and the kind of the draconian nature. Then District 12 finally voted, said no. They're just against, against the objective aspects of the item as presented. With that, that's my last report. Good night and good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Wells.
I believe the committee report from Health and Human Services says that the motion to amend was 5-5.
No. No, the motion to amend passed. They then voted on the item as amended, and it was 5-5. Mr. Isaacson.
Okay. On behalf of the committee, then, I propose, this is in the resolution itself, a prudent and appropriate, insert the word fiscal, and after 2010-11, delete, include, and substitute "that targets..."
I'm sorry. Could you, what was the fiscal part?
After appropriate, put in fiscal.
Oh, okay. For, for fiscal, you're gonna leave this one?
Budget for fiscal 2010-2011.
Okay.
And then delete the word include and substitute "that targets" a reduction in operating cost. Delete 5% and instead insert "from the budget 2009-2010 where possible." In the second point, prudent and appropriate budget for the Board of Education should delete the word avoid and insert the word minimize. The next paragraph remains the same, except to add at the very end a comma and. Delete paragraph 4, and paragraph 5 remains the same, but it now becomes paragraph 4.
Okay. I will read what you are now proposing we amend this to. So it would now read as follows. Now, therefore, it is a sense of the representative town meeting that a prudent and appropriate fiscal budget for fiscal 2010-2011 that targets a reduction in operating expenses from the fiscal budget of 2009-2010 where possible. A prudent and appropriate budget for the Board of Education should minimize spending growth, and the rest of that is the same. And everything else is the same, except delete the penultimate bullet point there. Okay? Does everybody understand what the proposed amendment is? All right, discussion on the Health and Human Services motion to amend item 4. Tim Harkness, District 7. Speaking on the motion to amend.
Good evening. I am one of the members of the BOC, and I did vote in favor of bringing the sense of the meeting resolution to the floor. I actually opposed the 5% number in the committee. But I voted for the discussion because I thought we needed to have the discussion. A budget resolution without a number is not much of a discussion. It's like being pro-happiness. It really is meaningless, and that's why I oppose this particular amendment. I think we need to have a discussion. We need to have a real discussion about numbers and their ramifications. Here we are, earlier tonight, we're talking about call items that had budget impacts, but we weren't actually talking in any analytical way about what those impacts were. That's my problem with some of the processes I've seen in the last two years, some of the things that we wanted to do in the BOC. One of the reasons I voted for this is that we need to have that discussion every time we come here, because we are voting on the budget essentially as we go. We have the big budget vote in May, but we have budget votes essentially every time we meet. And we're not talking about the budget impacts of our decisions. So I think we need to put the numbers in. We need to put the numbers in every single time, and we need to have this discussion throughout. So I vote, I would ask people to vote against the amendment.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend offered by our Health and Human Services Committee. Dr. Carlson, District 1. I have the result of the vote on item 3, which was the tax relief ordinance. Those in favor, 173; opposed, 2; abstaining, 4. That item is carried. Dr. Carlson.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. I think I'm well-known as a tax hater in the town of Greenwich. However, I can vote for this amendment. I think this is just beginning of what I hope will be a thorough discussion of the nature of taxation in the town of Greenwich over the next six months. I don't think we can have business as usual after the financial problems of 2008-2009. I think much needs to be rethought. I think the kind of way we've been doing business throughout America over the last 25, 30 years has to be changed, and we need a new scheme. I think any proposal that could be accepted by this organization, which would allow for a better discussion, is worthwhile. I think a slightly less idealistic and watered-down motion might be more palatable. But it'd be very good to come out of this room with something positive tonight to begin a discussion with. A sense of the meeting resolution has no legal power, so it's just something to discuss over the new year. I would accept the changes by the Health and Human Services Committee. I ask you to vote for them.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Health and Human Services Committee motion to amend item number 4. And please proceed to poll your delegation. We can continue with the general discussion of item number 4. Of course, if any speaker wants to await the result, you have that opportunity. I did ask for speakers who were interested in item number 4 to sign up. So I will go through that list while we are taking this vote. And if any speaker would like to await the result of the pending vote, by all means, feel free to do that. So let us begin with Bill Drake of District 5. To be followed by David Roberson, District 12.
Mr. Moderator and members of town meeting. This is a financially challenging period. You know, home prices have fallen substantially, and investment accounts have declined. Job losses and income reductions are borne by many of us. And the BOC felt it our duty to report on how these adverse conditions affect our town's finances. You know, several factors in the budget for the next fiscal year, starting July 1st, require special attention. Compared to the current budget, the required pension contribution will grow by over $6.8 million as a result of the drop in financial markets. This factor alone would represent growth of over 2% in the town's operating budget of $296 million. Likewise, even a conservative 2% increase in wages in our collective bargaining agreements is an increase excluding benefits of $3.7 million. Adding the growth in capital spending excluding the Nathaniel Witherell, which is $33.8 million, and then Project Renew Witherell, which is $29.6 million, and the drop in fee income of $4.9 million produces year-over-year net spending growth of $78.8 million. The town had borrowings of $112 million as of the last June 30th. The present level is a record, and the town's debt is scheduled to increase for the next few years to levels over $195 million in 2014. Meanwhile, the town's cash reserves have declined. We're finding it hard today to have the discipline to spend within the town's income. As a result, the town's debt is projected to increase to unprecedented levels. These figures are shown in the Explanos, and the amounts are worrisome. In 6 to 10 years, this debt will have to be repaid. And at that point, some combination of higher taxes and less spending will be forced upon us. The town will have to move from deficits today to surpluses tomorrow. The next batch of RTM and BET members and selectmen will be obliged to raise taxes and cut spending due to the choices we make now. Is it right to oblige those future officials to do what we won't do now? You know, these resolutions suggest that particular prudence and caution in spending and taxing and borrowing are appropriate this year. The resolutions call for a 5% reduction in operating expenses and a stable education budget. The recommendations also include a moderation of the growth of both property taxes and the town's debt. A budget following these recommendations would not cause adverse cuts in education or town services. Such a budget would entail spending at the levels of a couple years ago, which were not a austerity budget. not a austerity budget. Current year’s spending is already $10 million or 3.3% less, or current year’s spending is $10 million or 3.3% less than the budget already. That’s already representing good progress. Approval of these resolutions would indicate a prudent direction for the budget under the unusually tight circumstances of this year. Approval would help the selectmen, the town department managers, and the Board of Estimate Taxation by defining an overall budget within which priorities can be set. The efforts of town officials have been conscientious, and these choices are not easy. Mr. Tessie and his department managers and the member of the BET deserve our support. You know, the BOC and the RTM cannot take over the town’s task of setting particular department increases or reductions. Our body is not the right one for setting the park budget versus human services versus education versus some other particular interest. Instead, these resolutions are in the interest of the very broadest group, the total community. The action here is the most representative it can be. You know, the hand of government in town has been a light one. We take this for granted, but our strong finances have been for years an important part of what makes our town such a wonderful place, especially for middle-class residents. Our taxes are not high, and we were debt-free for generations because the financial policies adopted were those of self-discipline. We hope that you will vote yes and see fit to continue the careful and modest financial policies that have served Greenwich very well for so long. Thank you.
David Roberson, to be followed by Bill Bambrick of District Twelve.
Good evening. Dave Roberson, District Twelve. I’d like to thank the BOC for bringing this forward. Most of us seem to agree that the discussions that have been provoked by this have been productive, and I think the BOC and Mr. Petricelli did a good job laying out the current situation, especially in the Explanos. Most of us also seem to agree that we have a serious situation on our hands and the sense that something isn’t right with the business-as-usual approach, as Dr. Carlson said. As one example, I’ll point out the chart on the debt from the BOC. I mean, the most obvious thing is the looming mountain of possible future debt, but if you look closely at the last decade also, you’ll see that even for this last decade, while we’re sticking with the 3.5% increase, you know, our sacred cow with the 3.5% increase, and property values are going up, the debt was still increasing. You know, that’s, even during good times, our debt was still increasing. So something doesn’t seem to add up there, and I think we all recognize that, that something isn’t working with the business-as-usual approach. So I think that’s the message we really want to send here about no more business as usual. And the question is whether this resolution really is the right way to articulate that message. And as written, many of us have reservations about that, about the particular recommendations in here. So do I. As written, or even as amended, I think that the various recommendations are at odds and that they’re either too simplistic or not simplistic enough. For instance, I’m sure several people would like to see a 0% mill rate increase. If that’s what you want, you should vote on that. Other people would like to see us issue no further debt or adhere more strongly to Pago. If that’s what you want, you should vote on that instead. That way, at least the message would be clear. However, I’d like to propose something a little bit different and straightforward. We’ve talked about it before, a zero-based budget review. That’s what a $400 million corporation in dire financial straits would do. That is, you start from a blank slate, you look at all the things that you do. Number one, what services do we provide? Number two, what do we want to pay for them? And number three, how much do we have? The key here is that you have to clearly identify what your priorities are for the town and seriously examine those and whether our spending reflects that. To be clear, I think that this should be done, or should at least be led by the people here in the town. For instance, the selectmen, the BET, BOC, and other folks, not outsourced as some other outside report. Therefore, I’d like to propose a motion that we amend this resolution for the recommendations. And I can do that to a zero-based budget review. I can do that once we have the results of Mr. Isaacson’s amendment or...
Okay, we have those results. The vote on the Health and Human Services Committee motion to amend item four, those in favor, 58; opposed, 110; abstaining, 10. That motion to amend has failed. Mr. Roberson?
All right. So my proposed amendment would be to amend the language to strike the four bulleted items in the “now therefore” paragraph and replace it with the wording, “The town should perform a thorough zero-based budget review for all town departments.”
All right, there are five bullet point items. You want to strike them all?
Correct. It would then read at the end, “Now therefore it is the sense of the representative town meeting that the town should perform a thorough zero-based budget review for all town departments.” That would keep it simple, and if I might address Mr. Pruner’s objection earlier, I only came up with the idea of adding this in the past few days when it seemed like this motion might be likely to fail, and I was also not particularly happy with either watering down the language or making it less specific.
All right. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to amend item four so that it would now read, and correct me if I’m wrong. “Now therefore it is the sense of the representative town meeting that the town should perform a zero-based budget review for all departments.”
Thorough zero-based budget.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That motion to amend is now before us. Discussion on Mr. Roberson’s motion to amend item four. Mr. Boutel, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, the folks in Town Hall who are left, we say no business as usual. I’ll remind you, for the first time ever, we’ve had layoffs in this town. But for those who are left, they’re working hard. The problem with this proposal and the problem with the sense of the meeting resolution that underlies it is a little late in the game here. All town departments have already submitted their budget. We are well into the budget process already. This body starts to pay attention in January, perhaps February, when the BET is holding hearings, but town departments have been working on this already. At the last Board of Selectmen’s meeting, there was extensive discussion of raising fees within parks and rec, and some of those were adopted. We are well into the budget process. I understand that the desire to control spending, you know, nobody in this body has stood up, I think the way I have, for 24 years and spoke against labor contract increases, spoke against capital expenditures for the Police Administration building. The problem we ran into was in the past, when the economy was going up, 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 and nobody ever thought housing prices would fall, I can remember three years standing up, three years ago, standing up here in a budget meeting and people perhaps thought I was Chicken Little, but saying, “They won’t go up forever. We can’t continue increasing spending at 13 or 14%.” And it was 13 or 14%. The 3.5 number we keep throwing around, I wish we would stop using that number. That is the mill rate increase. That is not the tax increase. Some, prior speaker spoke about raising the town’s debt at the same time we’re raising spending, at the same time we’re raising taxes. It’s all driven by spending. Yes, do we need to do a thorough review, but that means that each and every one of us in this room needs to be involved in the process. We went through a year ago in this body, laying out, under the leadership of the Budget Overview Committee, what each committee’s responsibility was when it came to the budget process. We as RTM members should already be involved in that, and I don’t think the majority of us are. So as I’ve said to this body before, when we want to look and see where the problem is in the process, we should start by looking at each and every one of us in this room. It’s easy to say, leave the priorities to the BET, leave it to the first selectman. I think that the purpose of a body like this is to give them some priorities, to say to them. And the underlying resolution, which I’m not going to speak to now, does do that. It sets priorities. But to go to simply zero-based budgeting is a great idea in the next budget cycle. It’s too late in this budget cycle to ask them to rip up all the work they’ve done and go back to zero-based budgeting. You will just wind up with a mess.
Further discussion on the Roberson motion to amend item four. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Roberson, a motion, Roberson, motion to amend item four. And proceed to poll your delegation. We will continue with our discussion of this issue. Mr. Bambrick, District Twelve, to be followed by Bob Stone of the BET.
Thank you, Moderator and fellow members of the RTM. I rise tonight to advocate for the youth of our town that are in the high school because the idea of freezing the educational budget almost implies that, you know, our school systems are performing to everybody’s expectation. Well, there’s been some recent news this year. In Newsweek Magazine, in June, they had a study of the schools, and Greenwich High School was not in the top 10%, wasn’t in the top third, wasn’t in the top half. It was just above the lowest third in ranking. And a very recent one by U.S. News and World Report, they based it on the Olympics where they gave gold medals, silver medals, and bronze medals. We weren’t even in it. So I think the school system, it certainly is not performing to my expectation, which would be that Greenwich High would rank in the top 10% of this 1,500-school group that was the study group. So I oppose really putting a cap on educational spending until we know what’s going on. In the last year, the rating of Greenwich High School dropped 15 percentage points. So I would hope that you would consider not freezing the educational spending until we understand what’s going on with the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Stone of the BET, to be followed by Michael Botson of the Board of Ed.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting and guests. Since 2005, our town has been following a deeply flawed financial planning model, constructed around assumptions which even in pre-economic downturn days were obviously erroneous. Failure to begin to take reasonable corrective action will be to endorse and revalidate a path as leading us toward levels of much higher taxes, levels at increasing numbers of our neighbors, those who elected you, have neither the stomachs nor the pockets for. Next month, outstanding debt excluding sewer and witherall-related will top $81 million and continue past $124 million by 2016. When the subject, the concept of borrowing, was introduced by a former first selectman five years ago, he suggested it might, quote, “eventually total $50 million.” Ladies and gentlemen, it was at least a slippery slope, as I characterized it then. Most importantly, borrowing without a realistic plan to service the debt is nothing more than a tax deferral, and it’s distracting attention from the problem. We’re moving further and further in the wrong direction. There is no exit strategy, no honest way out of this debt load that we’re building right now. Unless we get our arms around operating expenditures, the identified and eventually executed new capital projects will result in budget increases that smash through the outer limits of the so-called guidelines and severely impact many of our fellow citizens. Just as an illustration, consider for a moment that increases averaging 7%, certainly foreseeable to amortize the debt that we’re incurring, given the current approach to operational spending, will take a tax bill of $5,000 beyond $7,000 after five years. Let there be no mistake, pursuit of the current course will result in what I’ve outlined. The key, the solution, is found primarily in dealing effectively with operating expenditures and applying some tough-minded fiscal management. You as our representatives have the final vote on budgetary matters. The resolution before you isn’t mine, and frankly, I might have crafted it somewhat differently. However, it gives you an excellent opportunity to send an important message. Thanks very much for your attention.
Mr. Botson, if I could have your indulgence for one moment. The district chairs have asked me to remind the members to fill out the memo asking for your contact information that will go in our RTM directory. It was in the packet that was sent to you with the call. I think you had to dig it out in some of the Explanos, but it just asked for contact information. So if you have that here and you can give it to your district chair, we would appreciate that. Mr. Botson, to be followed by Angela Highland of District Seven.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. I’m Mike Botson. I’m a member of the Board of Education. While as a taxpayer, I’m thankful that the Budget Oversight Committee is seeking to invoke a high level of fiscal discipline. As a member of the Board of Education, I am highly concerned that such a nonspecific, broad approach to any budget is inappropriate and highly risky. Plain and simple, we will not be able to deliver the educational services that the townspeople expect and demand in Greenwich if we are asked to meet this across-the-board reduction in our proposed budget. As with all town departments, our expenses are primarily labor-based. You are well aware that as a result of prior labor contracts to which we are subject, we have built-in cost increase of approximately 3%. To meet the target reduction, we would have to reduce our staff by 78 teachers, which would increase our student-to-certified staff ratio by close to 10% from 10.2 to 1 to 11.1 to 1. It would also eliminate many of the initiatives we are undertaking to improve the academic performance across the district. As was highlighted before, we are not satisfied where we are. It is not an overstatement to state that such draconian steps would have severe negative impacts on the quality of the educational system in Greenwich. The BOE works very carefully, very thoughtfully, and very thoroughly to present a prudent budget that meets the needs of keeping Greenwich education strong. As a member of the Board, I view my responsibilities as twofold: to provide the children of the town of Greenwich with the best education possible, and to ensure a strong stewardship of the funding that the town provides the school system. Both tasks are critical. The town has been resolute in its support of the school system financially and in many other ways, and we both recognize and thank you all for this. It knows that the value of the education system on its residents and also on what it is for many the greatest investment, which is their homes. A strong education system maintains strong housing prices. We need to remain competitive with our media peer group of Darien, Westport, New Canaan, et cetera. We’re working hard to compete against towns that face far fewer challenges with Greenwich faces in terms of the diversity of our student population. The BOE has shown a very consistent history of prudent budgeting, of returning unspent funds to town coffers, and of working extremely hard to not go back in for mid-year appropriations. At the end of the last fiscal year, the BOE showed a budget excess of $4 million, which we were able to give back. During our last budget process, when fiscal conditions first started deteriorating, the BOE immediately reduced the service level budget by $3 million. When the conditions worsened, we cut another $1 million, since that the year-over-year increase was approximately 1%, doing this despite the built-in wage increases. Rest assured that we continue to squeeze our budget everywhere to avoid impacting the direct teaching and learning in the classroom. Any of you who have attended our meetings know that we view, review our financial condition closely. This year’s student inflow of 70 students over budget is being dealt with. We’re working very hard to stay within this year’s budget and to absorb the incremental costs of these students. Our Director of Accounting has kept, started projecting our year-end financial positions based upon a statistical analysis of key financial metrics. We take the financial responsibility very seriously, and we have a history of delivering against it. It’s extremely dangerous to overshoot when you cut spending on education. You can’t recapture a year’s worth of education. We face significant challenges with our student population, and reversing the positive trends we have seen in our standardized testing lately, as a result, a broad base expense reduction would be extremely damaging to the system’s reputation. As we go into this year’s budget, we will again be focused and disciplined. We will be fiscally prudent and educationally sound. A proposed reduction, as the sense of the meeting resolution proposes, meets neither of these criterias. On behalf of the Board of Education, I ask that you do not support it. Thank you.
All right. Before proceeding, I have the vote on our final motion to amend the Roberson zero-based budget amendment. budget amendment. Those in favor, 36; opposed, 133; abstaining, 3. That amendment has failed. Mr. Harkness, did you want to speak again? Dr. Carlson, did you want to speak again? All right. Angela Highland, District 7, to be followed by Dr. Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and fellow RTM members. The BOC resolution states that Greenwich faces the same fiscal challenges as virtually every other municipality in the United States. That is an absolutely true statement. But what I don't see is the same response as other municipalities. As the Explanos talk about, there's 48 states in the Union and virtually every major city that is in fiscal imbalance. The response of virtually all of those governments has been slashing the budgets dramatically. The state of California is probably the poster child for fiscal imbalance, and in this year alone, they slashed 25 percent from their budget. And since their budget is over $100 billion, so it was a $23 billion cut in one year. And like other municipalities, cuts would have been even greater if they hadn't come into this recession with sizable reserves. Most municipalities had sizable reserves coming into this recession, unlike Greenwich. Now Greenwich, of course, is not in California, but it is a political subdivision of the state of Connecticut. You may know that Connecticut's budget deficit this year is about $380 million. It is expected to increase next year to $3.4 billion, almost a tenfold increase in one fiscal year. I think that's a leading indicator for what's going on in this state and what we'll be facing. And you may know that the rating agencies did cut the rating of the state of Connecticut. Now Greenwich's increased reliance on spending and lack of reserves, I think, is going to prove detrimental on both the operating side and also on the capital side, because we are going to be increasingly relying on the debt markets, capital markets, going forward. There has been some concern that the 5 percent suggested cut here is arbitrary. It may be, but I think it's a time for a paradigm shift in the way this town operates, and I would vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Dr. Carlson, to be followed by Michael Petroselli.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. In the second half of the 20th century, America was so rich, it could do anything it wanted. It could basically make any botch that it cared to, and it could be set right because it was so rich. The state was rich, the town was rich. This is not so anymore for this country. It's not so anymore for this state. The town is next. We need to do better than we have done. There's a change. There's a break. It has happened in the last couple of years. What we see in this country today are men like Governor Patterson in New York saying that you have to have a billion-dollar cut in education and health. Have you ever heard language like that from a Democrat governor anywhere? This is change, and it's necessary change. If we continue with the policies that have been embraced over the last decade in terms of town spending, we're going to materially hurt the middle-class people of this town. Just a few years ago, I listened to a wonderful planning scheme, and I noticed that in this wonderful planning scheme, it didn't seem to have any room for middle-class people. The people who will be hurt, who are hurt worse by this recession that was nearly a depression, are the middle-class and working people of this town. If you don't do something to buttress them up, I think what you're going to do is you're going to have less of them, and you will have a less healthy town. What you can do is you can make small cuts and make a better budget than you've ever done before. Or at least in the last six months, you can think about it. And that's what this sense of the meeting resolution that you have before you is about. It's thinking about something that is hard, much harder than any of the beam cuts that I have ever produced in this room. And I don't think I've ever asked you to make a cut that wasn't very small. But I think you should start matters off, perhaps in a rather grandiose way, by accepting this proposal as a first step in a dialectic. In my almost 18 years in RTM, I've always noticed that dialectic was somewhat missing in this organization. This is a very good time to bring dialectic to a head, and just to start matters off, accept the sense of the meeting resolution as a first step to a sharp discussion of what our budget should be in May. I urge you to vote for it. Thank you.
Michael Petroselli, Chair of the Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. I have some prepared remarks, and quite frankly, I'm really floored and pleased by the amount of discussion we've already had. So a lot of what I wanted to say has been said, and I won't repeat it. So let me get to the point. First of all, this is not a critique of the first selectmen and the BET. We are fortunate in this town to have people like Peter Tessie and Steve Walco and Mike Mason and the rest of the BET, because these are very capable and competent people that we don't thank enough. And the idea of this resolution came from these folks. You know, we've spent a lot of time the last year talking about improving operations, improving how we do things, and I view this as a chance to give them a mandate to go out and make some tough decisions, and then saying, listen, we heard from the people, and this is what we want to do and what we need to do. So please, this is not a critique of their actions. Let me back up. It's a quote from Winston Churchill. "Sometimes it is not enough to do our best, we must do what is required." We are Greenwich, and we are a fantastic place to live. It's a fantastic place to live because we have wonderful people, outstanding leaders, and we have the ability to make tough choices and deliver great services and take advantage of our resources. But we have to make tough choices, and they have to start now. This sense of the meeting resolution isn't perfect. Quite frankly, having heard what I heard tonight, I might rewrite it a bit. From my perspective, what I wanted to accomplish was to start a top-to-bottom review of this town. Now, it's primarily operations, but it's the structure. We have the first selectmen, different appointing authorities, the Board of Education. It's very hard to get all of these different entities working together. I think we need a fundamental review of how this town is structured. I have written in the newspapers, I have talked here, that we can do this prudently. We can do an internal review using our own people. The people in this room with other town citizens can help us really review and understand a better way to model our government. We can get nonprofits. There's a National Government Association, really a peer group that we can use to help us review our operations. I've also talked possibly about getting students from UConn or NYU to do a review of our town. For me, it's not just about cutting 5 percent now, it's about what we're going to do the next five, 10, or 15 years. And we have to start that process now. During the process, I haven't heard this tonight, but while I was giving these joint meetings, I visited some committees, I heard from some committees that, hey, the RTM is a reactive body. I find that hard to believe, because I don't think we're supposed to come here nine times a year and just complain about what's happened after the fact. And we have this tool, the Sense of the Meeting Resolution, that on our website, if I can find it, it is the sense for us to urge other town institutions to take initiative and to begin legislation. That's what the Sense of the Meeting Resolution is. We want to send a message. Quite frankly, if the BET and Peter Tessie came back after we passed this and said, you know what, guys, this isn't realistic, but we heard you, and we're going to start reviewing our town operations, and 2011, 2012, we're really going to get going? You know what? That's a step in the right direction. We can't do it all this year, but we have to start. Bill Drake outlined some of the challenges we face in terms of debt levels. Angela talked about the rating agencies. I spoke with Fitch Ratings. In fact, I spoke with the analysts that rated the bond anticipation notes we issued last Here's what they said to me. "Fitch is looking to see if municipalities are getting wage concessions or consolidating functions and are streamlining operations. They want to be sure that management is competent and is being proactive and looking ahead and not just putting Band-Aids on a year-to-year basis." Greenwich has a AAA rating now, and we need to make sure we maintain that AAA rating. Greenwich is recognized as a great place to live, but we should be the model of how towns and cities are run around the country. This is Greenwich. We should be the model. I'm not saying we're the worst-run town in the state, but I need to believe that we're the best-run town in the state. There's no reason we shouldn't be. Whether it's a good comparison or not, Greenwich Hospital, which manages 12,000 inpatients a year, 400,000 outpatients a year, hired an outside firm to study the efficiency of their operations, and they found ways to downsize 180 jobs while at the same time giving nurses more bedside time. The CEO Frank Corvino estimates that the study helped the hospital save $20 million in expenses and generate $5 million in revenue enhancements. We can do that, too. Believe it or not, I cut this short. I started with a quote from Winston Churchill, and I'll finish with one. "A pessimist sees the difficulty in every opportunity; an optimist sees the opportunity in every difficulty." We are Greenwich because we're optimists, and we see opportunities in difficulty. It's time to seize the opportunity. Let's send a message now. Let's set this town on the right path for the next 10, 20, 30 years. Let's start it this year. Let's be patient, but let's start it now. Thank you.
Oh, you don't want to follow that, Mr. Walco. All right. Steve Walco, Chair of the BET.
Once again, Steve Walco, Chairman of the BET, although the BET did not take up the Sense of the Meeting Resolution, so I really can't speak on behalf of the BET relative to whether or not we approve or disapprove of the Sense of the Meeting Resolution. I can say this: if the goal tonight or through this process was to get our attention, to have us think about what we do every year in terms of budgeting, I will submit to you, mission accomplished. On the BET, we think about this and talk about this on almost a daily basis. It is of no consequence that we voted on the revaluation to take place this year with the full appreciation and comprehension that there may be shifts in tax burdens, whether it be residential as opposed to commercial, whether it be within residential communities, or whether it will shift from backcountry to mid-country to shoreline. We are very concerned about that in light of the current financial situation facing not only our town and our country. That being said, the Sense of the Meeting Resolution addresses specifics that deal with a budget that is currently being developed. And while I don't necessarily agree that it's too late in the game for such a Sense of the Meeting Resolution, I would submit to you that on one hand, if you want us to live by the Sense of the Meeting Resolution, there will be consequences. And I don't quite understand the notion that the Sense of the Meeting Resolution is not binding. I agree with the Chairman of the Education Committee, Bob Brady, who submitted to you that if you vote for this, it would be almost impossible to vote against it come the May RTM meeting. I suspect that if you vote for this Sense of the Meeting Resolution now, you're going to expect a budget that comes in as the Sense of the Meeting Resolution dictates. I'm not sure that that's feasible. Obviously, it's possible. Anything is possible. And in this economy, certainly if you ask for that, we would attempt to accommodate it. But let's talk about what some of those ramifications would be. Currently, we're in discussions with the Fire Department for a backcountry fire station. By all accounts, backcountry needs a fire station. I'm not here tonight to debate that with you, but such a Sense of the Meeting Resolution, I would submit to you, and I sit on the CIP Committee not as a voting member, but certainly as a member, I would be not inclined to vote for the A&E money for such a station, knowing that the operating expenses relative to that backcountry fire station would be in direct conflict with this Sense of the Meeting Resolution. In another section of this Sense of the Meeting Resolution, we talk about Board of Ed-level services, but yet a decrease of 5 percent. And while it's true that you might be able to not decrease one particular budget but increase or further decrease yet another, how many park gardeners can we eliminate? I talk a lot to many RTM members, and we, the BET, tried earnestly to reduce Department of Social Services for many years, and we were hit with much resistance to that. That might still be a worthwhile adventure. However, as we move forward, if you take out fire, and you take out police, and you take out Nathaniel Witherall, and maybe you take out Board of Ed, what are you left with? I don't disagree with the Sense of the Meeting Resolution in terms of what it's trying to accomplish. This year will be an interesting one for the BET. For the first year in many years, I have BET members who have suggested a mil rate increase of greater than 3.5 percent, reaching 4 percent or maybe even beyond. I have not heard that in my tenure on the BET previously. At the same time, I've heard BET members, several others, who submit that there should be a much lower-than-3.5 percent mil rate increase. I submit to you that it will be an interesting budget discussion as the months go on. This body has the most, I would say, influential decision on any budget, and that's relative to collective barn agreements. It's very difficult for me to read a Sense of the Meeting Resolution that calls for a decrease when a majority of the expenses flow from operating expenses coming from collective barn agreements. Are you prepared to reject every single collective barn agreement unless it has a 5 percent reduction? In essence, that's what the Sense of the Meeting Resolution suggests. If you take all of them together, you would decrease those collective barn agreements. If not, you have to eliminate positions. We've done that. We've not only decreased the table of organization through layoffs, we've had a retirement incentive program, which, I'll admit, the jury is still out on as to how much it's actually saving the town, but the BET is monitoring it and working with the appointing authorities, and in particular, the first selectman in his office, to ensure that there is a savings from that program. We're trying to create environments of cross-training between Tax Collector's Office, Assessor's Office, and Parks and Rec to try to minimize the amount of staff that we need. We're trying to decrease redundancy. We're looking into shared services between the Board of Ed and the town of Greenwich. We have dual HR committees, we have dual building maintenance departments. There's a redundancy there that we're looking into. We take our job and our obligations to our fellow citizens very seriously on the BET, as you do. And it's important to recognize that these are ongoing processes. I submit to you that, again, you got our attention, we are listening. If you vote for the Sense of the Meeting Resolution as it's written, you are asking us to reduce the budget, and I'm not sure if it's relative to last year's budget or whether to the guidelines. If it's to the guidelines, you're actually asking for about an 8.5 or an 8.3 percent reduction. And if that's the edict that comes from this body, and the assumption is that this body would only pass that budget, then the ramifications, I think, will be larger than the discussion that has taken place tonight. Some would be for the good, and I'm sure there will be others that will argue that they weren't the best of cuts at this time. We do have a plan. We are attempting to address that plan, and we think that plan, you have worked on that plan with us over the past several years, to the extent that we have a shift in that plan, and you want this to be the impetus for that shift, we will listen, and we have been listening. Thank you.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number four, and proceed to poll your delegation. That being the last item on our agenda tonight, we will await the result of that vote before adjourning the meeting. Once again, to all those members who decided not to return next term, I extend our deepest thanks for your service, wish you all the very best, and hope to see you down the road. thanks for your service, wish you all the very best, and hope to see you down the road. We have the result of the vote on item number four, the Sense of the Meeting Resolution offered by our Budget Overview Committee. Those in favor, 72; opposed, 98; abstaining, 3. That item has failed. That being the final item to come before us tonight. An absent objection, this meeting is now adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holiday, and have a safe trip home.